I want to call to order the Amberley Village Council meeting of September 6, 2018. Please call to roll.
Kate Conway?
Here.
Ann Hattenbach?
Here.
Alita Kamine?
Here.
Tom Muthing?
Here.
Natalie Wolfe?
Here.
Scott Larmer?
Here.
Kevin Frank?
Here.
Chief Wallace?
Here.
Rick Kay?
Here.
If everyone could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
First item on our agenda this evening is our minutes from our last meeting. Those minutes were circulated in the council package. Are there any corrections, deletions, additions to those minutes? If not, we can consider the minutes approved. Next item is the finance report for July 2018.
Including your packet as a summary of the finances for July 2018. On the earnings tax collections for the month of July, it totaled a little over $142,000. This is up just a little more than 3% from July of 2017's collection of $137,000. So, so far, we've collected almost $1.6 million, and that represents about 58% of what we had estimated for our collection for 2018. On the property tax side, we did receive an advance from Hamilton County, an amount of $320,000. We also received $5,900 from the state local government fund. That is through the state of Ohio. So, the revenue for the month totaled $576,000. That represents a total year-to-date of $3.2 million, which represents about 68% of what we had estimated to be collected for 2018. On the expense side, for the general fund, $313,000 was the total expense for the month of July. And year-to-date, we have spent $2.5 million, which represents almost 50% of the budget as of the end of July. We ended the month of July with an unencumbered general fund balance of $6.1 million. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the manager? If not, we will now move on to our guest speaker. And this evening, we have Natalie Fields, who is our branch manager for the closest branch of the library. And Natalie has been gracious in the past to update us on what's going on at the library. So, welcome again, and thanks for updating.
Well, thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. Appreciate your time. So, I'm here, most importantly, to thank you and the Amberley Village community for your support, day-to-day, but also via your tax dollars and funding our two levies. And following the spring's update, some of you reached out, and I really appreciated that, too. So, to ensure the best possible use of those dollars, the library has retained Group Four. They're an architecture, research, and planning firm, and they're going to help us with the facilities planning process. Because you may remember from the spring that after 18 years of deferred maintenance, that some of our branches are in very poor condition. And you may know that the Price Hill branch is operating out of a temporary location because some of those deferred maintenance issues meant that we had to close that branch for a while. But we're working out of the CRC and offering many of the services that you come to expect from us. So, we do have really great ties with other organizations in the community, and so that's just one example of, you know, how those benefits are paying off as well. So, Group Four is going to help us with this planning process, and a key part of their work is gathering robust community input. So, do look forward for opportunities to share your input and, you know, let your constituents know that they can come to us directly and give feedback on our locations. And, of course, we're going to publicize when those happen. I'd like to zoom in a little more closely to the service area of our Deer Park Branch Library. And I'm pleased to report that we had a record-breaking participation in our summer reading and learning program. More people participated by the end of June than in all of 2017. So, we're really pleased to see so many people of all ages really consistently using the library over the summer. Through our summer meals program, that's the one that's sponsored by the Ohio Department of Ed, as well as the USDA, we served an average of 18 meals a day, Monday through Friday. And then through a generous donation from the Bridge of Hope Church, we were able to offer snacks to young people outside of official service times, because, as you know, with government programs, they have very specific rules for getting those federal dollars. So, we were able to offer snacks during the evenings on Saturdays. And then, this year, we had five weeks of summer break before and after the USDA program. So, those dollars also helped us provide snacks to young people during that time. One other thing that donation has enabled us to do is to be more responsive to our community's dietary needs. So, the meals that we get from the Ohio Department of Education, those are never kosher. And our Orthodox families are always very understanding about us not being able to provide kosher meals. But with these dollars, we were able to at least provide kosher snacks for anybody who needs those. So, that made us feel a lot better about being responsive to our community this summer. So, this fall, we're looking forward to providing a second session of pop-up preschool. That's an eight-week series of classes for 12, three-to-five-year-olds. Our class is full already, so that's very exciting. We had really great outcomes from the spring's program. And then, of course, we're going to continue to offer all the services you come to expect from your library: literacy and homework support, workforce development, reading and learning for pleasure. And tonight, I apologize to you and to the community members here. I normally like to stay till the end of council and trustee meetings so that I'm available for questions. I do have to run tonight, but you know where to find me. And I encourage all of you to reach out and encourage the community members to reach out, because we are here because of you, and we are here for you. So, we're ready to hear from you anytime. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Hi, Ms. Fields. Thank you for coming and updating us. And I learned something just now that I'm so pleased with, and I'm -- and this is about the meals and the snacks. And I didn't realize that the library performed this service. And I, even in our own community, we're very diverse, and there are families and students, I'm sure, who qualify for reduced-priced lunches and rely on that during the school year. And I was not aware that the libraries filled that need during the summer months. So, that's fantastic, and bravo. I didn't know that. How long has that been going on?
This was our sixth year--
Really?
--to provide this service. And many of the Cincinnati Public locations had been providing this service for longer, probably two to three years longer. It's been a really wonderful experience for us at the library. And, you know, at our Deer Park branch, we don't have programming space. So, it absolutely affects customer service in great ways and in some not-great ways. But one of the things I really love about our community is just how supportive neighbors are of one another. And so, since the library really can't be quiet when we have 30 children eating lunch, that we offer quiet zones in terms of time. So, the community's just been very generous about understanding that between noon and 3:00, it's not quiet, but we're going to have quiet time from 3:00 to 5:00.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, again, thank you very much for coming in and giving us the update, and we look forward to the next one.
Thanks so much. I do, too. See you soon.
Okay. We'll now move on to the committee reports in the Streets, Public Utilities, and Stewards Committee. And this evening, in the chair of that committee's absence, Councilwoman Hattenbach will present the report.
Thank you, Mayor. First item is the proposed resolution, 2018-19, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract with Hamilton County and its vendor for furnishing salt for snow and ice control purposes. Last year, we were rather fortunate that we did not have to purchase any salt. However, the -- this year, we do have to purchase salt, but it will not be funded until next year. Unfortunately, the price of salt has gone up from $52.51 a ton to $78.46 a ton. Mark does gyries like crazy. It has been that way for the last eight, nine years, that prices go up and down constantly. So, we never know what price we're going to pay. We purchase through Hamilton County, so that way, we do not have to try to go out and get the -- try to negotiate our own deals. Hamilton County does the work for us. Accordingly, I move that we approve Resolution Number 2018-19, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract with Hamilton County and its vendor for furnishing salt for snow and ice control purposes.
Second.
Okay. It has been moved in second that we adopt Resolution 2018-19, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract for the annual purchase of salt. Are there any questions or comments? I mean, the one -- one thing, I did sit in the committee meeting, and again, I think the staff of, you know, Scott, your staff did a great job doing the analysis on this and really figuring out the exact amount that they should purchase, et cetera. So, you know, I felt really good walking out of that meeting. Walking into the meeting, I thought, you didn't need to purchase any, but you did a great job in the analysis. Okay. So, it has been moved in second that we adopt Resolution 2018-19, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract for purchase of salt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Be noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
The second item is to consider an application with the Ohio Public Works Commission for a grant for road improvements on some of the streets in Amberley Village, in particular North and South Farmcrest, and a -- to the municipal fund -- municipal road fund for Kincaid. There's a cost for these -- street repairs would be in excess of $1.5 billion, which, you know, this puts a little -- puts a bind on us. So, we're trying to get grants to help reduce some of these costs. And the grant process, which we're going to go with, will require us to put up a matching amount of 50% of the bid amount should we get -- be fortunate enough to receive the grant. The -- so, the total cost, if we get approved, would be approximately -- would be close to $800,000. That's our share, should we get the grants for Kincaid and North and South Farmcrest. So, accordingly, I want to recommend to council that we approve Resolution Number 2018-20, the resolution authorizing the village manager to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and Local Transportation Improvement Program. So moved.
Second.
Okay. It has been moved in second that we adopt Resolution 2018-20, which would authorize the village manager to prepare and submit an application to participate in these grant funds. Are there any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I feel like this is -- this is Groundhog Day for sure, because this is the fourth attempt. We've been trying to get this grant since I was on the Streets Committee, which was a pretty long time ago. I was there when Mr. Cryness came and begged us to fix the street, and he has since passed away. Mr. Schneider has sent photographs every year, begging us to fix the street. And I really hope we get this grant, but now I'm wondering what our plan is, if we continue to be turned down, because the street is not improving on its own every year. And we're going to need to, at some point, address this issue.
Well, you are correct. This is the fourth year that we are applying for the funds. In the previous years, we have taken different strategies to try to leverage the village to improve our chances. What we've done this final year is to increase our share of the cost. So, we would be bearing 50% of the cost, which gives us additional points. The other item that we have done is we've agreed that we would borrow the money from OPWC. Now, as you know, we don't typically borrow money for any type of work, but what we can do in this situation is we can borrow the money for one year. It is zero interest, and then we can pay that off after the first year has passed. That garners us additional points as well. So, we -- the staff is doing everything we possibly can to increase our chances of getting the funding. In regards to where we go from here, if we get turned down, that's a discussion that all of us will be having regarding that situation.
Thank you, Senator.
Will you ask -- refer to the borrowing? Does that mean borrowing our half, our $800,000?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And I would add, in addition to what the Vice Mayor said, in -- Councilman Warren in committee mentioned that he went out and actually walked the street, and he would -- he would share -- he would say that the residents that would have expressed concern about the street, you know, are correct, and that the road is in pretty poor shape. Any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved in second that we adopt Resolution 2018-20. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Be noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
That concludes my reports. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. We will now move on to the managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to mention a couple of items. The village has issued a demolition permit for a house at 9110 Amber Creek, and that is a bit unusual for us issuing a demolition permit. We don't do that often. But this is the house that caught fire on Amber Creek in early June. So, the demolition permit has been released by the village, so you should expect to see some activity in that area. We recently had a very successful ice cream social, and I just didn't want to pass -- miss on the opportunity to thank not only our donors, who so eloquently funded the ice cream social, which included quite a few members sitting at the dais here, but also the generosity of most of you, along with some other folks like Stacy Lefton, Pete Duffy, Kathy Kramer, Nancy Racy, Sandy Pywin, Rick Kay, as well as Mary Stillpass, who donated and provided lunch for all the employees that worked at the ice cream social and helped put that on. So, employees were very appreciative of the lunch, and we thank you for that. But very successful ice cream social, and quite pleased that it turned out well. And then, the last item I wanted to mention is a seasonal type of situation. It's time for us to temporarily suspend brush collection. So, the week of October 1st will be the last week for brush collection. So, October 1st through October 5th will be the last week that we do brush collection. We actually have a week -- we skip a week before leaf collection begins on October 15. So, as you know, we cannot perform both of those functions at the same time. They aren't compatible, and we don't have the staff available to do both functions. So, we'll be promoting to our residents to have any brush out before that first week of October, so that we can take care of that, because then they will have to deal with their brush for the next three months on their -- on their own, while we do the leaf collection. So, we will promote that -- was probably -- well, we'll promote that in the print newsletter that'll be going out later this month, and certainly do some other social media on that item. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the manager? If not, we will move on to each's report. Okay. We'll move to the mayor's report. First item on the mayor's report before you tonight is Resolution 2018-21. I mentioned this at the last meeting. This was an item that we -- was brought to our attention by Councilwoman Kamine, that a number of communities were trying to put resolutions that could be put before the state legislature as they consider what to do with excess funds in the upcoming two-year budget cycle. The current expectation is that there will be a surplus that is in excess of the amount that would be allowed to remain in the rainy day fund. The rainy day fund, limited by the state, is $3 billion, and it is expected that the budget surplus will be sufficient to go in excess of this $3 billion. So, the legislature and the governor are currently considering what they would do with that surplus. Many communities who have suffered through the big reductions over the last eight to 10 years are hoping that the governor and the General Assembly will take -- will consider putting some of those funds, if not all of those funds, back to local communities to partially restore the funds that they've reduced and help us with some of those budget issues. So, I have put together Resolution 2018-21, which we would forward on to the governor and the General Assembly. A number of communities, I know Cincinnati has passed a similar resolution, and I'm sure many other communities. The -- it is being something that is being recommended that we do as communities. So, I hereby move that we adopt Resolution 2018-21.
Second.
Okay. It has been moved in second that we adopt Resolution 2018-21, which would urge the Ohio Governor and the members of the Ohio General Assembly to invest the state budget surplus in municipalities. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved in second that we adopt Resolution 2018-21. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Be noted that the resolution passes unanimously. Next item on my report with respect to the Environmental Stewardship Committee. The next meeting will be September 24th, which is Monday, at 7:00, down in the community room. The next event for the Environmental Stewardship Committee is the green clearing. The Environmental Stewardship Committee does green clearing and minor tree maintenance up at the Amberley Green. It suspended those activities in the months of July and August because of heat, but it will be resuming that on September 20th at 5:30. So, anyone interested can just meet in the parking lot and join the members of the Environmental Stewardship Committee in doing some of that. The next item I wanted to mention is a letter I received, which -- this letter is from Nimet Geraldzami. And Nimet has been, you know, a frequent attendee at meetings, a very active member of the community in far as the stormwater advisory committee. She's been on the committee since the beginning, and I just want to share this letter, because it is, I just think, a beautiful letter. Dear Tom, Amberley Village was my husband's first love since his student days at Eber Union College. When he became member of the faculty of HUC, the first thing he did was buy a house in Amberley Village and realize his dream of living in this special part of Cincinnati. We have been wonderfully happy in this rural and beautiful area where we raised our children, four professionals who still call Amberley their home and visit very often. My husband was also a great gardener. We embellished our garden with many fruit trees and seasoned vegetable plants, but he was particularly mesmerized with the beauty of crepe myrtle, which I have to add, my wife is also. He decided to share his love of these late-summer blooming beauties with the general community by planting crepe myrtle trees on the village grounds. He lovingly dug the holes with his own hands, planted and watered them, achieving a beautiful landscape for all to enjoy. I am perpetuating his love by donating more plants to our beloved village. And there was also a donation made in memory of Nimet's husband. So, thank you very much, and again, thank you for the beautiful letter.
I'd just like to add that we also, from the police department, received a letter. I'm not going to sit and read the letter and embarrass her again, but we truly appreciate it. We actually developed a pretty good relationship with Nimet and her husband, and we were happy to be able to be there and help her and help him whenever we could. It meant a lot to us to be able to be there to help you. But she also made a donation, and we're going to use that towards some equipment that we're going to purchase that we need in honor of her husband, and she actually will be part of the day we actually break the equipment out and stuff. And we really appreciate it. It means a lot to us.
But again, and thank you very much. And, you know, I think the line in that letter about, you know, the great residents and so forth, you are one of the great residents. So, thank you very much. And that concludes my mayor's report.
When you go to new business.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay. I know Councilwoman Conway has some new business, so I'll turn to her and then you.
Okay. I just want to make everyone aware that this -- that Pleasant Ridge Montessori is observing its 10th anniversary this fall, since it opened in the new building, and they are having an event on -- to observe their anniversary, and it's also their open house on Tuesday, September 25th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the school. It will begin with their -- this new tradition of hands around the school. There'll be a few remarks from the principal, and then by 6:30, they're going to start having tours. And I really want to invite and urge you all to come. It's really a great opportunity to just come and see the school. You're not, you know, you don't have to feel weird, like you don't belong there, because it's really an open house for the public. I just think it'd be a great opportunity. And I think it's really good to note the 10th anniversary, because it's 10 years that we've had one elementary school for our whole village. So, when that school opened, that became our single elementary school for our neighborhood. So, that concludes my report.
Kate?
Thanks. I want to let our residents know about a new initiative that the Health Education and Welfare Committee is about to undertake, and it is part of the We Thrive. We Thrive that -- which is part of Hamilton County Public Health, and Amberley Village is a charter We Thrive member. And that is, we are going to be starting to work on the chronic disease pathway. We've already completed the -- We Thrive consists of a number of different pathways designed to promote healthy living within communities, and they help elected officials prioritize what kind of projects they're going to work on to improve their community. And it was very, very helpful to us in 2011 and 2012, when we first worked on what was kind of the -- it was sort of chronic disease, but it was called something else. Since then, they have designated pathways of chronic disease, emergency preparedness, environmental health, injury prevention, social health, and substance use. And we were easily able to jump right in on environmental health, because we have the Environmental Stewardship Committee, and it seemed like a perfect fit. For a number of years, our mentors over at We Thrive have been trying to get us to work on finishing and completing the chronic disease pathway, but it's not as easy to do, because we don't have the vehicle of a committee that's not a designated council committee. So, now, through an interested resident coming -- attending one of our Health Education and Welfare Committees, and that's Carol Donilon, she is -- this is totally up her alley, and she's excited to take the lead on the chronic disease pathway and put together -- put together a working group that's not a committee of council that can work without, you know, they can work on their own time, and then bring their suggestions and results to the Health Education and Welfare Committee to see if that -- if what they are finding is something something that we want to work on in committee. So, the first, we're first meeting on October 5th as part of the HEW Committee at 3:30, and anybody who's interested in, well, what chronic, what We Thrive calls chronic disease, which is, what they say is to make the healthy choice the easy choice, covering such areas as eliminating heart disease, stroke, cancer, diabetes, and making sure people in the community have access to improved nutrition, increased activity, decreased exposure to secondhand tobacco, smoke, some of the things that, that you'll already recognize that we've worked on with our pedestrian safety initiative and our, you know, non-smoke, don't smoke in the public parks signs that we already have. So, that's coming, and I hope, you know, if you have a interest in public health, come to our meeting. That concludes my new business.
Any questions or comments, or any other new business? If not, we can consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Seven?